Let's see who wins. Teacher for points for popo. If you pluck when you're not supposed to, I get a point. Here we go. Peepi, get ready. Oh, man. You got a point. Good job. I didn't try to trick you. They always play that. I don't know.
It is 6:31, and I would like to call the meeting to order. Can we get another round of applause for Sajid and her strings performers? And do we have any parents here, I presume, of these very fine artists? Could you stand up so we can thank you for sharing them with us tonight? And I should have said, please stay up because I would ask everybody to rise and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you again. That was lovely, and now may I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Christiansen?
Here.
Mr. Pantera?
Here.
Mrs. Greenberg?
Here.
Dr. Lim?
Here.
Ms. Wani?
Here.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of agenda. Dr. Reynolds.
Thank you, President Greenberg, Governing Board, Cabinet, and all of our guests this evening. Items approved by consent will not come up for discussion during the meeting but will be approved when the agenda is adopted. This is possible since members of the Governing Board received the agenda along with backup materials at least 24 hours prior to the meeting and have had time to review and consider all items. Prior to the agenda being adopted, members of the Governing Board may ask that an item be removed from the consent agenda and brought to the floor for discussion at the appropriate place on the agenda. Any member of the audience who submitted a blue public card prior to the start of the meeting will be recognized to speak on that agenda item under items for approval. I would like to offer the agenda as posted, but I would ask that the Board remove item F-13 so that we can bring it back for a later discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Prior to the meeting, we received one card, but it was on that issue, on that item, so we have no blue public comment cards. Does any member of the Governing Board wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mrs. Christiansen may have a motion to approve the meeting agenda and recommended consent agenda items.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is Governing Board statement. Mr. Pantera, do you have anything?
Well, yes, I do. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Welcome. I had a very busy time between the last time I was here at a Board meeting and this time. One of the things I attended was a football game, a flag football game, girls' flag football. It was fantastic. Pinnacle against Shadow Mountain, I believe. It was great. It occurred to me that there seemed to be a lot more sports now in high schools than when I was in high school. Maybe it's just perception thing. Maybe it's the type of sport. It was really exciting to see. Another thing I did was go to PV Voice. I think, who else? Mr. Christian, you were there, right? And so were you. Yeah. They were talking about AI, not A1, okay? So they were talking about how to get that. The students were working on getting recommendations, and they really took their work very seriously. You know, they had solid recommendations, and I'm really proud of the students we have here that they take these kind of tasks seriously. They're not just there for a free meal like I am. Also, one of the coolest thing I did was yesterday, the other day, was at Shadow Mountain High School, right? They had the North Valley Arts Academy. Their capstone presentations, I think it's their inaugural version of this, where everyone that did these projects showed up and they were all in the gymnasium, demonstrating, showing, like a dissertation, I was told. Excellent program. I wish I could have gotten to every single one of them, from music to dance to visual arts, graphic arts, all kinds of technical things. One student I saw, her whole project was about how art helped her become a growing person, to get through her grief. And another person was about how they, oh, I've got it right here because I think I need it. It's senior somatics, okay? It's dancing and movement for seniors. So maybe I'll be investing in this. At least I'll turn my mother on to this. It's an excellent program, and from what I understand, I think Mrs. Slater was telling me about it. Did I say it right? Her last name? Yes. That this program is an honors arts program. There's only like, the only one in the state that we're aware of. That's a four-year honors art program. And I was talking to these students, they were telling, they were talking about their sixth year in the program because they're talking about when they're in middle school or in the school before they got into high school. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Mintig, there's three types of seals the state can give you. Is she still here? Maureen? There's four types of seals that the state gives for arts kind of recognition, and just this one program, if these students go through it successfully, they get two of the four just on doing that program. I'm very much impressed. It's so great to see all these different pathways our students can take to learn and yet still be themselves and retain that ownership of their own personal space. I look forward to seeing many more successes with this in the future. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Pantera and Dr. Lim.
Sure, I'll just take a moment. So I know we're always taking time to appreciate our staff, but staff appreciation, the actual week is just around the corner, and I know parent organizations at all the schools, as well as leadership at those schools, as well as many of our local individual community partners, as well as organizations are coming together to really support many of our schools and make amazing things like lunch and different opportunities happen to appreciate our staff. So I just want to say a kind of a headed, in advance, thank you to all those individuals who are taking the time to make sure our staff at our schools feel appreciated and supported during what is staff appreciation. I know that our school at Waspringe Winds is looking forward to the appreciation we're going to offer, and I know that sentiment is shared across the district. So thank you to those supporting Staff Appreciation Week as it comes up, and enjoy your staff appreciation treatments that many individuals are going to experience upcoming in May.
Mrs. Christiansen?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to first say, I don't know if any parents are left from the strings performance, but that was very impressive. Who says that strings can't do choreography? I saw that last number, and I think the gold star should go to the musician that had a pink cast on and was fiddling away. So that was impressive. I just want to welcome all community members as we normally do because as a constitutional republic, the Board represents your voice, and we love it when community members reach out to us. Today is the National Day of Prayer, so for those that celebrate that, you know, we could use some more goodness in the world. So just welcome to those that are celebrating National Day of Prayer. And I did attend Student Voice, and I will say, this is my third year of seeing these students. And what, for those of you that don't know, Student Voice is where high schoolers come and get to speak to the Board directly and Cabinet members and the superintendent. And the growth that I've seen in these students in just these years, that, you know, students that were freshmen and sophomores are now upperclassmen, it was just, it's just so great to see the growth. And finally, I would just like to say thank you to all of the members of the Pinnacle High School, parents and students that have reached out to the Board. While I can't speak on behalf of the Board or the district, I just want to say thank you. I have read all your emails, and while I can't reply to everything, I just appreciate you reaching out to us with any concerns you have.
Thank you, Mrs. Christiansen. Ms. Wani?
Good evening, everyone. So yes, I'll just have to, the Suzuki program is fantastic. How cute were those little tiny violins? Both my kids went through that program, and it's just, I'm so excited and happy to see it continue, and it's a really special, special program that we get to offer. I think it's pretty unique, as we could see tonight, those little tiny first graders. So thank you to them. They did a fantastic job, and Laura Seiden does a fantastic job, and I think she actually tours around and plays. If you ever look her up, you can go see her because we got a little taste of that tonight. She's pretty phenomenal. And thank you to everyone for being here tonight. I also just kind of want to take a moment on the heels of, you know, I think, like National Volunteer Week and all of that kind of coming to a close, and just give a tremendous, tremendous, tremendous shout out to our parent groups across this district. I know how hard you all work. I know how much you care, and you give your time and your talents and your heart just so effortlessly, it seems, but I know it takes a lot of work and a lot of organizing. And our booster clubs and our United Parent Council who support those parent groups across the district as much as possible and who are constantly recognizing others. So I just want to take a moment and recognize United Parent Council for all the hard work that you do. And also, our Volunteer in Paradise program, which is phenomenal and amazing, and we had an opportunity to go and be a part of that celebration, which was just an honor to be in the room with some of those folks because they are incredible human beings who also give so much of their time and talents, just so generously. So just thank you so much to all of the human beings, all of you good people who do above and beyond for our students and for our district and because you choose to. And I just, I really, really appreciate it. I know we all really appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Wani. I also had the opportunity to do a number of, go visit a number of programs and schools over the last couple of weeks, and, you know, most recently with Student Voice along with Mr. Pantera and Mrs. Christiansen, and just want to give a shout out. The students are incredible. As, you know, folks have said, we've been looking at the topic of AI and, you know, not just looking at it, but really looking at how our student experiences can help impact our policies and our protocols and processes because we all know that it's here to stay, and we need to be looking at it as the tool that it is and how we can best utilize it. And, you know, who better to help that than the students who are impacted, you know, almost, I'm sure, on a daily basis? So love that we were able to do that. We also, because this was our last meeting of the school year, we had our student body leaders and our incoming presidents, and so we got to meet those folks as well, and a big shout out to the leaders on our campuses. Also had the opportunity last week to visit at North Canyon High School because Mr. Harshfield has started a chapter of Quill and Scroll, which is a journalism honorary, and they initiated two members last week, and I was honored to ask to speak a little bit as a, you know, former high school editor in chief and journals and major in college. It was near and dear to my heart, so I want to thank Mr. Harshfield and Ms. Loker for that invitation. And then had to rush home because I was asked to speak to troop 316, the fourth grade Weebloos, all of whom are PV students, were completing a badge requirement to speak to an elected official. So we had a great conversation about what it means to serve on a governing board in Arizona and what we do. And yes, we are elected officials, and so they had some really great questions. Couple I couldn't answer, really had more to do with budgets, so Ms. Berg and I may flip those questions over to you, but it was, they really knew a lot about the district. They had some really terrific questions, so it was a lot of fun to do that. Also had the opportunity to visit the PDA prom boutique on its last day, and I'm not going to steal their thunder, but I know they, because I know they'll be here next meeting is my understanding, but I know they were able to work with, I think, probably more students than they have in the past, and just had some phenomenal outfits and some phenomenal outcomes for the kids, so it was great. And along with Ms. Wani was able to be at the VIP volunteer recognition on Monday, and I think there were some updated numbers. I wrote about the program in the president's message in our newsletter, but I think since then, we've had something like 12,000 volunteer hours, and it's still growing because the school year isn't over from our VIP program alone, and that's incredible. And a huge shout out to VIPs, and as everybody said, to all of the volunteers in our district. We could not do this without you, and there's absolutely no way. And every single, you know, presence in a classroom or, you know, chaperoning a field trip or, you know, helping out at a field day or, you know, the countless other opportunities, and everybody steps up all the time. And it is, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts because we couldn't do it. So thank you. I know that was a lot of comments, but it's May, and there's a lot of things going on in a school district. There always is. So next on the agenda is another fun topic, and that's awards and recognitions. Dr. Reynolds?
Thank you, President Greenberg. At this time, I'd like to invite the Governing Board to join me in front of the dais.
Good evening, President Greenberg, Governing Board members, members of Cabinet, and attendees both in person and virtual. Tonight, we have several recognitions to share with you. This evening, we'll be inviting honorees to the front of the room for the recognition and photo. Please make your way to the front of the room when I read your name or when your group is called. The Jerry L. Morgan Volunteer Award honors volunteers who display dedication and service to the community as exemplified by late UPC member Jerry Morgan. Tonight, UPC Chairperson Megan Starr is here to make a presentation.
Hello, and thank you very much for having UPC here tonight for this really important opportunity to recognize our volunteers. I'm going to invite my president of UPC, Julie Brumik, up with me to help because she, I don't have enough hands. So tonight, we are recognizing all of the amazing volunteers that we have in our district, and these span every single campus and off of our campuses. We have volunteers who volunteer their time coming into classrooms, volunteer their talents, raising money, volunteer their time helping teachers. And we ask every year for our schools to nominate exceptional volunteers to be considered for the Jerry L. Morgan Award. Jerry Morgan was a volunteer in our district who gave everything to her schools. She was phenomenal. She unfortunately passed away in a car accident on her way back down the mountain on the I-17, and in her honor, we established an award so that we can acknowledge volunteers going forward. This award is presented by UPC, and it comes with a monetary donation to the recipient's charity or organization of choice. This year, we had three finalists for the Jerry Morgan Award. They were all exceptional individuals. Glenn Burton from Sonoran Sky Elementary, this is actually his second year being nominated. I promise he will not always be a bridesmaid. Rebecca from Fireside Elementary School, and Donna Locke, who was nominated from the Little Cubs Program at James P. Lee Child Development. And the recipient of this year's Jerry Morgan Award is Ms. Donna Locke. So we'd like to have her come up. Yeah, you can come here. Ms. Locke is a retired teacher who couldn't quite get enough of being here on our schools and our campuses. She's come back, and she comes back and volunteers at James P. Lee every single day for several hours a day. She works with children from the infant room, kindergarten, sorry, not kindergarteners, from the infant room, first one-year-olds, two-year-olds, three-year-olds, everybody. And in addition, what makes her exceptionally special is in addition to working with our children in their classrooms, she also works with the staff, helping to motivate and mentor new teachers and young teachers, and bringing her expertise back into the classroom. So we are exceptionally grateful to Ms. Locke for the amount of time that she has dedicated to our district, and thank you for recognizing her tonight. So for the rest of you, these are our previous year's nominees. This lives in the district office on the wall, and thank you, Ms. Locke and the rest. If you guys want to go outside for pictures, we can. Thank you.
Our next honoree is one first place in mathematics and Best of Fair at the Arizona State Science and Engineering Fair for their project based on partial differential equations. Each student received $2,500 scholarships to the University of Arizona, and will have the opportunity to compete at the International Science and Engineering Fair next week. Join me in wishing these students the best of luck at their next competition from Paradise Valley High School, Tejas Doolipala and Mantank Parashar. Our next recipient was named the 2025 Flynn Scholarship recipient. The senior is one of 20 students in Arizona to win this prestigious merit-based scholarship. This recognition highlights exceptional academic achievements, leadership potential, and a commitment to community service. If this recipient chooses to attend a public state university after graduation, he'll receive funding for his tuition, room and board, study abroad opportunities, and other enrichment activities. Please put your hands together from Paradise Valley High School, Oliver Horst. Next, 11 of our high school students were selected to compete in the All-State Choir and Band Competition hosted by the Arizona Music Educators Association. To earn this prestigious honor, students must participate in a very competitive and rigorous process. Musicians who are selected take part in auditions, intense rehearsals, and master classes led by expert conductors and instructors. One of our honorees tonight has been an all-state choir participant during all four years of her high school career, which is truly remarkable. Please help me welcome from Horizon High School, Sadie Benavides. Miles Gusterson. Chase Harris. Ethan Heatherington. Faith Issa. Alex Tyree. From Paradise Valley High School, Cameron Forrest. Ethan Nguyen. Anya Ram. Jack Sinisak. And from Pinnacle High School, Lauren Carney. Next is the Paradise Valley Education Support Professional of the Month. PVSEA President Ms. Michelle Courtwright is here this evening to make the presentation.
President Greenberg, Governing Board, Dr. Reynolds, and Cabinet, my name is Michelle Courtwright, and I am the president of the Paradise Valley Support Employees Association, and this is one of the highlights of what I get to do, and it's very ironic that this month, excuse me, that we are recognizing an instructional assistant. Holly Hunter works at Greyhawk Elementary, and many times people ask me, what is an instructional assistant? Or when it was a paraeducator, what are they? And a lot of people think we cut out papers and make copies, and we do that for a little tiny bit of time, but most of the time, we work one-on-one with our students. We work with some of our most vulnerable students. We meet them exactly where they are. We are the support they need to be successful. We help teachers with behaviors. We do whatever is needed at that moment in time, and Holly I hear is very, very good at what she does. She has an energy that she brings from as early as 8:30 in the morning to all students. She meets people by name with a smile, and I guess sometimes she brings bubbles. But she is an inspiration in the classroom. She is always willing to help anywhere she needs to. The kids love seeing her, and she has a passion that comes out of her every single day. So it is with great pleasure that we recognize Holly Hunter from Greyhawk as Employee of the Month for May.[500.11]
Good evening, President Greenberg, Governing Board members, members of Cabinet, and attendees both in person and virtual. Tonight, we have several recognitions to share with you. This evening, we'll be inviting honorees to the front of the room for the recognition and photo. Please make your way to the front of the room when I read your name or when your group is called. The Jerry L. Morgan Volunteer Award honors volunteers who display dedication and service to the community as exemplified by late UPC member Jerry Morgan. Tonight, UPC Chairperson Megan Starr is here to make a presentation.
Hello, and thank you very much for having UPC here tonight for this really important opportunity to recognize our volunteers. I'm going to invite my president of UPC, Julie Brumik, up with me to help because she, I don't have enough hands. So, tonight, we are recognizing all of the amazing volunteers that we have in our district. And these span every single campus and off of our campuses. We have volunteers who volunteer their time coming into classrooms, volunteer their talents, raising money, volunteer their time helping teachers. And we ask every year for our schools to nominate exceptional volunteers to be considered for the Jerry L. Morgan Award. Jerry Morgan was a volunteer in our district who gave everything to her schools. She was phenomenal. She unfortunately passed away in a car accident on her way back down the mountain on the I-17. And in her honor, we established an award so that we can acknowledge volunteers going forward. This award is presented by UPC, and it comes with a monetary donation to the recipient's charity or organization of choice. This year, we had three finalists for the Jerry Morgan Award. They were all exceptional individuals. Glenn Burton from Sonoran Sky Elementary. This is actually his second year being nominated. I promise he will not always be a bridesmaid. Rebecca from Fireside Elementary School. And Donna Locke, who was nominated from the Little Cubs Program at James P. Lee Child Development. And the recipient of this year's Jerry Morgan Award is Ms. Donna Locke. So, would like to have her come up? Yeah, you can come here. Ms. Locke is a retired teacher who couldn't quite get enough of being here on our schools and our campuses. She's come back, and she comes back and volunteers at James P. Lee every single day for several hours a day. She works with children from the infant room, kinder, or sorry, not kindergartners, from the infant room, first one-year-olds, two-year-olds, three-year-olds, everybody. And in addition, what makes her exceptionally special is in addition to working with our children in their classrooms, she also works with the staff helping to motivate and mentor new teachers and young teachers and bringing her expertise back into the classroom. So, we are exceptionally grateful to Ms. Locke for the amount of time that she has dedicated to our district. And thank you for recognizing her tonight. So, for the rest of you, these are our previous year's nominees. This lives in the district office on the wall. And thank you, Ms. Locke and the rest. If you guys want to go outside for pictures, we can. Thank you.
Our next honoree has won first place in mathematics and Best of Fair at the Arizona State Science and Engineering Fair for their project based on partial differential equations. Each student received $2,500 scholarships to the University of Arizona, and will have the opportunity to compete at the International Science and Engineering Fair next week. Join me in wishing these students the best of luck at their next competition from Paradise Valley High School, Tejas Doolipala and Mantank Parashar. Our next recipient was named the 2025 Flynn Scholarship recipient. The senior is one of 20 students in Arizona to win this prestigious merit-based scholarship. This recognition highlights exceptional academic achievements, leadership potential, and a commitment to community service. If this recipient chooses to attend a public state university after graduation, he'll receive funding for his tuition, room and board, study abroad opportunities, and other enrichment activities. Please put your hands together from Paradise Valley High School, Oliver Horst. Next, 11 of our high school students were selected to compete in the All-State Choir and Band Competition hosted by the Arizona Music Educators Association. To earn this prestigious honor, students must participate in a very competitive and rigorous process. Musicians who are selected take part in auditions, intense rehearsals, and master classes led by expert conductors and instructors. One of our honorees tonight has been an All-State Choir participant during all four years of her high school career, which is truly remarkable. Please help me welcome from Horizon High School, Sadie Benavides. Miles Gusterson. Chase Harris. Ethan Heatherington. Faith Isa. Alex Tyree. From Paradise Valley High School, Cameron Forrest. Ethan Nguyen. Anya Ram. Jack Sinisak. And from Pinnacle High School, Lauren Carney. Next is the Paradise Valley Education Support Professional of the Month. PVSEA President Ms. Michelle Courtwright is here this evening to make the presentation.
President Greenberg, Governing Board, Dr. Reynolds and Cabinet. My name is Michelle Courtwright, and I am the president of the Paradise Valley Support Employees Association. And this is one of the highlights of what I get to do. And it's very ironic that this month, excuse me, that we are recognizing an instructional assistant. Holly Hunter works at Greyhawk Elementary. And many times, people ask me, what is an instructional assistant? Or when it was a par educator, what are they? And a lot of people think we cut out papers and make copies. And we do that for a little tiny bit of time. But most of the time, we work one-on-one with our students. We work with some of our most vulnerable students. We meet them exactly where they are. We are the support they need to be successful. We help teachers with behaviors. We do whatever is needed at that moment in time. And Holly I hear is very, very good at what she does. She has an energy that she brings from as early as 8:30 in the morning to all students. She meets people by name with a smile. And I guess sometimes she brings bubbles. But she is an inspiration in the classroom. She is always willing to help anywhere she needs to. The kids love seeing her, and she has a passion that comes out of her every single day. So, it is with great pleasure that we recognize Holly Hunter from Greyhawk as Employee of the Month for May.
I have lots of people here. My principal, Mr. Hubbell is here. Mr. Washburn, our music teacher. Haley, who, Ms. Haley, who nominated me. My mom, my brother, my sister-in-law, lots of teachers, the Lahontas. I have lots of people here to support me. So, thank you.
And lastly, tonight, as we bridge our way into superintendent comments, Dr. Reynolds, if I may, for a special recognition, I'd like to invite Dr. Missy Martin to the podium.
President Greenberg, Governing Board members, Dr. Reynolds and Cabinet. My name is Missy Martin, and I am the, one of the directors here for Human Resources for our ESP group. And on behalf of COA, PvP, and PvEA, it is my distinct honor and pleasure to recognize an extraordinary leader whose unwavering dedication in PV schools, especially our support personnel, has been a cornerstone of our district's success. Recognizing the person who organizes all the PVSEA nominations for Employee of the Month posed a unique challenge for us. Therefore, we took a non-traditional approach to ensure that our collective gratitude was fully conveyed. It is with great pride we celebrate Michelle Courtwright, PVSEA's leader for the past eight years. When we invited members across our schools and departments to submit reflections on Michelle's contributions, the response was both immediate and overwhelming. Every message underscored the same truth. Michelle's leadership has made a profound and lasting difference in the lives of our employees and the overall well-being of our educational community. Michelle's dedication is evident in countless ways. She is a full-time employee whose commitment often begins before dawn, fielding calls as early as 5:00 a.m. Her work continues long after traditional office hours, often answering urgent evening calls from me and other administrators, always responding with patience, problem-solving, and compassion. Regardless of the time or challenge, Michelle follows through, never wavering in her advocacy for her classified group. Beyond her responsiveness, Michelle has been instrumental in promoting fairness, equity, and professionalism across all departments. She has played a critical role in resolving employee concerns with dignity, championing for additional professional development opportunities for classified staff, and fostering a culture of respect and inclusion. She has served as a bridge between administration and employees, ensuring communication is clear, transparent, and rooted in mutual respect. Common themes emerged, and I have a few of them here in our base, with heartfelt submissions, unwavering advocacy, tireless work ethic, integrity, compassionate leadership, and an unfailing commitment to service. Michelle's efforts have created a ripple effect that extends to students, family, and the larger PV schools' community, reinforcing a culture of excellence, care, and support. We are deeply grateful for Michelle's exemplary service and enduring legacy within the Paradise Valley Unified School District. Her leadership has not only strengthened PVSEA but also enriched the entire district. Leaders like Michelle remind us that the dedication, compassion, and advocacy are the true hallmarks of excellence in education here in Paradise. Thank you all. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to honor such an exceptional leader today.
And with that, President Greenberg, I'll turn superintendent comments over to Dr. Reynolds.
All right. In PV schools, we engage, inspire, and nurture students through high-quality instruction, meaningful educational opportunities, and dynamic learning experiences. One of those opportunities is, and as evidenced by tonight's recognitions, we truly do live up to our word. Student success in Paradise is made possible by the hard work of our students, the support of our parent and guardian community, the generation's support of our taxpayers, and our incredible, incredible staff. And May is a time to celebrate our staff, specifically through a couple of big days next week: School Principals Day, School Nurses Day, and Teacher Appreciation Week. PV Schools recognizes the hard work and dedication of our teachers, principals, and nurses, and all of our staff. And we are grateful for the unwavering commitment to student success. As we wrap up the school year and the days get busier and busier, PV Schools want to encourage you to take a moment to show your appreciation for these staff members who are vital, who are a vital part of our journey of excellence. I'd also like to take a moment tonight to say congratulations to Greyhawk Elementary School for being recently certified as a Blue Zone school. Students and staff have been working hard over the past year to achieve this rare and unique certification. Blue Zone certified schools promote healthy habits by encouraging physical activity, nutritious eating, and social connection among students and staff. And tonight is a special night because PV Schools takes great pride in growing our own leadership and capitalizing on the capacity we build with our employees. For more than 40 years, we have been identifying, developing, and nurturing aspiring administrators in our administrative internship and management training program. Each year, we select a small group of teacher leaders and provide them with experiences to continue to prepare them to be administrators in our district. So, tonight, we would like to recognize the 2025 AIM class. And I would like to point out, I was in the 2002 AIM class just a few years ago. But we would ask our AIM, our AIM class to stand and be recognized. These are the faces of our future district leaders. President Greenberg, that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Next on, and congratulations and thank you. Next are items for approval. And first up is consideration approval of Administrative Employment Personnel Actions. Dr. Holmes.
Madam President, members of the board. Kimberly Kodo-Wenger is currently the Assistant Principal on a special assignment at JPL. She earned a Bachelor of Science in Cross-Catagorical Special Education from U of A and a Master of Arts in Educational Administration from GCU. If approved, she will receive salary and benefits in accordance with PvP Bargain Agreement, or pardon me, the COA Bargain Agreement. And we recommend you approve Ms. Kodo-Wenger to be the next Assistant Director of Special Education.
Thank you. Mrs. Christensen, may I please have a motion to approve the recommendation to hire Kimberly Kodo-Wenger for the position of Assistant Director of Special Education as presented?
So moved.
Does any board member have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, Ms. Kodo-Wenger.
Do you have any family to introduce?
Addison Fimbres is currently the Assistant Principal at Manzanita Elementary School in the Washington Elementary School District. She earned a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education and Cross-Catagorical Special Education from ASU and a Master of Arts in Educational Leadership from GCU. If approved, she will receive salary and benefits in accordance with the PvP Bargain Agreement. And we recommend you approve Ms. Fimbres to be the next principal at Cactus View Elementary School.
Mrs. Christensen, may I please have a motion to approve the recommendation to hire Addison Fimbres for the position of Principal of Cactus View Elementary School as presented?
So moved.
Does any member of the board have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, Ms. Fimbres.
Welcome. Do you have anybody to introduce?
Jessica Sexton is currently the interim principal at Larkspur Elementary School, so she won't even be moving offices. She earned a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education from ASU and a Master of Arts in Educational Administration from GCU. If approved, she will receive salary and benefits in accordance with the PvP Bargain Agreement. And we recommend you approve Ms. Sexton to be the next principal at Larkspur Elementary.
Thank you. Mrs. Christensen, may I please have a motion to approve the recommendation to hire Jessica Sexton for the position of Principal of Larkspur Elementary School as presented?
So moved.
Does any member of the board have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, Ms. Sexton.
Do you want to introduce anybody?
Thank you.
Maureen Minnick is currently our Director of Fine Arts. She earned a Bachelor of Arts in Music Education from U of A and a Master of Arts in Secondary Education from ASU. If approved, we will be three-for-three in appointing principals who have graduated from ASU. So, a high-quality class of principals we have for you this evening. And she will receive salary and benefits consistent with the PvP Bargain Agreement. We recommend you approve Ms. Minnick to be the next principal at North Ranch Elementary.
Mrs. Christensen, may I please have a motion to approve the recommendation to hire Maureen Minnick for the position of Principal of North Ranch Elementary as presented?
So moved.
Does any member of the board wish to make a comment? Mr. Pantera.
Just go Devils.
Mrs. Christensen.
I'm very happy for you, but I'm very sad because I love you as our Director of Arts. Congratulations.
Anybody, we have to vote first.
We're getting there.
Seeing no one else, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, Ms. Minnick.
Thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Next on the agenda is consideration approval to award RFQ 25-017 for Construction Manager at Risk, or CMAR, for Indian Bend Elementary School Rebuild. Ms. Bergin.
Take a minute? Okay.
Will vamp for a moment while the room clears.
Okay. Thank you, President Greenberg and Dr. Reynolds. They always leave before I present the budget. It's so weird. But actually, before I present the budget this evening, I have something very exciting to bring to the board, and that is the RFQ Award for our Construction Manager at Risk, or what you hear us refer to as CMAR. It is the next very important step in the rebuild of Indian Bend. And we issued a request for qualifications on March 10. We received seven submissions. And following a thorough review and our ranking process, we invited the three highest-ranking firms back for interviews, which we held on April 9. Based on those evaluations and successful fee negotiations, the committee is recommending Chase Building Team for the award. And tonight's proposal includes the pre-construction services, which includes working with us as the district as well as the architecture firm that we've selected for the Indian Bend rebuild, or Cut Winslow, to perform value engineering, constructibility reviews, budget development, and scheduling. So, upon completion of the pre-construction phase, then the selected GC, the general contractor Chase, will develop and submit a guaranteed maximum price. We expect to bring that first GMP to the board in the June 19 board meeting and, or excuse me, August board meeting. And on June 19, we will have our architects, or Cut Winslow, present with us to let you know where we are at and what has been a very collaborative process with the Indian Bend community so far working on the rebuild. And I'd like to point out tonight, if Mr. Barry Chase and Mr. Patrick Shepherd will stand up, they are with Chase Building Team. And they can answer any of those construction-y-type questions if you have any of those because I cannot answer those questions. But I bring to you this recommendation this evening and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Bergin. Mrs. Christensen, may I please have a motion to award RFQ 25-017 for CMAR for Indian Bend Elementary Rebuild as presented?
So moved.
Does any member of the board have any questions? Ms. Wani?
Thank you. Thank you. If I had known we were going to be able to ask construction questions, I would have brought some. But I did not know we would have this opportunity. So, thank you for being here. I have just a few questions. Can you tell us, Ms. Bergin, who's, so who's on the committee?
So, we had, I think it was four or maybe five people on the committee. Mr. Drew Davis was on the committee. Help me out, Mr. Drew Davis. Dr. Drew Davis.
Or just roles is fine. I don't need names. I'm just, yeah. Okay. Thank you. And since we have the experts here, and I am so not, could you just tell us a little bit about, like, this phase that we're talking about? Like, how long does it last? How, like, what's sort of the regular anticipated period of time we're talking about?
For the pre-construction phase only?
Yeah.
Dr. Davis, do you want to answer that? Would you like Mr. Barry Chase to answer that? I think he wants Mr. Barry Chase. Would you please come up here and do that, please?
Yes, I would say whoever's answering gets to come to the mic.
Madam President, Greenberg, and members of the section panel, it's an honor to be here tonight. So I would love to answer this question and say, like, the next phase is when our team now can join and collaborate with Paradise Valley School District staff and their leaders in the construction side and work with the architect, Orca Winslow, and really try to refine design, make sure we're bringing as much value as we can with construction expertise. What's the best materials to use? What's the best systems to use? What's the best sequencing to use in order to execute the project? And that's really where we are right now. I'm going to say it's going to be, how many months, Patrick? Would you say?
We're looking at about three months, three to four months.
About three to four months of that process of pre-construction, then we'll be coming back in front of you for the actual GMP, which is the construction budget that we'll be proposing.
August. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just have one more quick one, I swear. And you said that there's been an opportunity to collaborate with the Indian Bend community. Could you just speak a little bit about what that process has been like so far, or like how that has gone? Have you kind of all sat together, looked at designs, that kind of thing?
Yeah. So we, Dr. Davis and Heidi Lindsey and I, we have all sat with the principal. And then we originally invited everyone from the school to attend, whoever wanted to attend, to talk to them about the process of the staff, excuse me. And then we developed a steering committee of about 15 people, I believe it is. So that is parents, teachers, any staff members that want to participate, and we even have community members. And our next meeting next week will include children.
I was just going to say, and students.
I'm super excited about that one. And it's more conceptual design. It's more about, rather than presenting a design and saying, this is what your building should look like, it's a process of collaborating with everyone to say, what are your needs? What does the building you're currently in not serve for you, and what do you need a new building to serve? The three of us did get a little bit of a glimpse today into some potential site plans, and we believe that by the June 19th board meeting, when we have Orca Winslow present, it will not be final design by any means, but we'll have a much better, more of a 3D conceptual design of what some of the pieces will look like for Indian Bend. But it's incredibly exciting. The staff has been over the moon. They're beyond positive. We had to get them over the hump of understanding that, don't worry about the smell, the smell will go away. Don't worry about all of that. You get a whole new building, and with that comes what comes with a new building.
Better smells.
What's that?
Better smells.
You're right. There's smells, but still better smells. And just as a reminder to the governing board, the November 2023 bond that passed, when we worked with the committee on that side of this, we talked about having two elementary school rebuilds and a middle school rebuild in there. So that was a planned expenditure within this bond program that we have from November of 2023.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Christensen?
Thank you for being here today. So in terms of risk management, this is an older site. In planning and looking at the holistic approach of this new build, what is different about doing something with an older building that may potentially have asbestos and things of that nature? What kind of safety precautions are made for the surrounding community? Because I know it's very different than just a flat land, and then, you know, pre-construction is very different. So what sort of risk mitigation plans are going to be in place for just safety in general for the surrounding community?
Great question. So our team will collaborate instantly with Drew and the PV team and Orca Winslow to really get a deeper assessment. We have not until tonight, hopefully we can get approved tonight, be able to thoroughly engage with the plan, logistics on what we need to do to make sure this school, what components of that school is going to be demolished, if there's going to be anything saved. It's really too early for us, because we haven't been part of those, too many of those meetings. So we're eager to be a part of it, but there'll be a thorough plan. And our firm has done 20-plus rebuild-type elementary school projects, where you're taking down existing schools and rebuilding schools. So our team, Patrick's far better than I am, at really developing a very comprehensive plan, make sure the community, staff, and students are incredibly safe. We don't see that overlap happening with this one, because the students are going to be moved, but the community is right there and is surrounded by houses. So it's going to take a very thoughtful plan. And might add, my wife graduated Larkspur and Shadow Mountain, so this is really special to me.
Very cool.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you both for being here.
Very much.
Appreciate it. Now, next on the agenda is consideration approval of revised number-two version of the fiscal year 2024-25 State of Arizona School District Annual Expenditure Budget. Mrs. Bergin.
Thank you, President Greenberg, Dr. Reynolds, and Governing Board. I have before you our final revision of the budget for the 24-25 school year. This is, I won't go through this in great detail again, but this is just a reminder of the fact that those three different colors represent different fiscal years that we're always working in. So most times of the year, I'm operating off of where we've closed out for last year, where we're at this year, and where we're planning to be for next year. And while we're already planning for next year and waiting on our legislature to approve a budget, so that we know where things land, so that I can present a fiscal year 25-26 budget to you in June, we are finishing out this year's budget and making any final revisions in accordance with changes to ADM and any other changes we have in our budget. So with that, when I review this, I refer to the two largest funds, our Maintenance and Operation Fund and our Unrestricted Capital, and compare that against the adopted budget, just so that you're aware of the changes. The May revision is about 1.2 million less than the adopted budget. You will, I expect every year, always see that for the December and May revisions, because as a reminder, we adopt that budget high in the June timeframe, so we don't lose out on any budget capacity for our MNO override. And we know that there's always going to be a revision down. When we plan the budget, the budget that we talk about, that's, do we have money to work with, or do we have to cut from the budget, it's a little bit different than this. This is really just the forms and the technical or bureaucratic side of it that has to be presented to the Department of Education. And then with our Unrestricted Capital budget, just a slight decline of $45,000. Those budget factor differences are primarily also due to the ADM decrease. And as a reminder, our ADM, our average daily membership, our enrollment of our students isn't even final until October or November of the following year. So I am closing out a budget that I won't even know what the final ADM is on until October or November of next year, or next fiscal year. The MNO, additionally, the MNO carryforward decreased from an estimated $19 million when we did the budget adoption to 17.4 on the May revision. That's just where the operating funds landed. One of those operating funds, or the primary one, obviously, being our MNO, or Maintenance and Operation Fund. And as I said, these are just changes to our budget form. The real impact on the operating budget is what I present throughout the fall and the winter timeframe, along with other budgetary changes, namely expenditures and changes to staffing. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on our final budget revision of the year.
Thank you, Mrs. Bergin. May I please have a motion in accordance with Arizona Revised Statute 15905 to approve the fiscal year 2024-25 State of Arizona School District Annual Expenditure Budget Revision Number Two as presented?
For Ms. Bergin or for me?
That's for you, Mrs. Christensen.
So moved.
Does any board member have any questions or comments regarding the revised budget?
I just have one question, and it's probably in the very detailed materials that you sent us, but it's kind of a little bit in another language than the language I speak, so I'm just going to ask you. Speaking just in terms of this year's anticipated budget, were there any, like, one-time funding buckets or sources, whether it would be state or grant or federal, that are expiring or that we won't have access to? Was there anything like that, just in our budgeting?
Yes. If I remember correctly, this was our final year of our ESER III grant, where we made a payout at the beginning of the year. So that is a place where, and that was, I want to say, eight to nine million dollars. It was a pretty significant amount of money. So when I present the 25-26 budget, you'll see a pretty big decline in our federal funds overall, and that's going to be the primary reason.
Okay. And so I mean, I'm sure there's already conversations and planning about adjustments that need to be made.
So, particularly, great question. Particularly with ESER funding, we, two things. We worked primarily to ensure we were spending on things that were not going to be ongoing costs, and anything that were potentially ongoing costs, like staffing positions, is made very clear from the beginning, that when these funds expire, these positions expire, and we have to find other staffing for that. And that was, there was no staffing in it in this fiscal year's budget. The staffing ended at the end of last fiscal year. The payout this year was a one-time payout, like a retention payout for all staff, so it was perceived as a one-time payment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Mrs. Christensen?
As always, thank you for presenting the numbers to us. I was just wondering if you have any updates on anything coming in from the federal. I know it's kind of a moving target, so any of the federal concerns that we've discussed in prior board meetings, I'm hoping there's no issues. And if there are any changes, are there any mitigation risks that you're looking into?
Yeah. So there's kind of two pieces to that, Mrs. Christensen. There's the piece of the assurances that were signed, and then a court order that sort of put a stay on that, but we complied with that anyway. So I don't see any freezing or holding back of funds for that reason either way. We do have a reduction to our federal funding, namely due to title, a decrease in our title percentage. Our percentages have gone down. And so with that, obviously, the funding is reduced correspondingly. And our federal programs folks are working on adjustments to positions. We do have some carryforward in our title funding that can bridge the gap for a year and until we know what our final allocations are. It's probably more important to bridge it for that timeframe. Thank you. You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Ms. Wani?
Yeah. So the decrease for title funding, is that that's because there are a lesser percentage eligible, or because criteria changed? Or?
No, not because criteria changed, but because we have fewer who qualify.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Nope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. And I just want to remind the board, don't leave before signing the budget document. Thank you. Next on the agenda is acceptance of gifts and donations. I'd like to review a few. We've had some various generous donors, and donations come in since our last meeting. Dorito Partners gave rewards for students worth $1,000 at Echo Mountain Intermediate School. At Horizon, three natives, Joe Umke, gave $1,000 to the Athletics Department. At Larkspur, Cyber Grants LLC donated $1,000 for fifth grade. At Liberty, Andrea Hershey donated $1,000 to resolve lunch debt for students. At Paradise Valley High School, we had an anonymous donation of $1,881 for the lead club for a trip. And at Shadow Mountain, the PTC donated six benches, three gold, three blue, and media center door wraps worth $3,500. So again, thank you to all of our very generous donors. I don't think we could do this without you, and it certainly supports our students. Mrs. Christensen may have a motion to accept gifts and donations, please.
So moved.
Does any board member have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is call to the public, so I ask that you turn your attention to the video monitor.
Call to the Public is about to convene. This portion of today's meeting allows the public the opportunity to address the Governing Board. Although state law does not require that the Governing Board hold a call to the public, the Paradise Valley Unified School District and its board have chosen to do so because we believe it's important to hear about concerns and issues from our community. While call to the public is not designed to be a discussion, the board is here to listen. Due to Arizona open-meeting law, the Governing Board cannot respond to, discuss, or take any action on items brought up during this time. However, staff members may be directed to get back to you and address individual concerns. As a reminder, the point of this and every board meeting is to accomplish the business at hand, and to be able to do so in an open and collaborative way. All in attendance are expected to observe meeting rules, as well as rules of politeness and decorum, so that we may serve as an example to our students that issues can be discussed in a respectful and civil manner.
Thank you. Tonight, we have seven people who have submitted comment cards prior to the start of the meeting, so each speaker will have three minutes for remarks. As a reminder, we ask that you please direct your comments to the board. As we noted on the video, that we cannot respond. Please state your first and last name when you come to the podium. Our first speaker will be Jennifer Ariza, followed by Emily Elbert.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Ariza, and I stand here tonight as a concerned parent in the Paradise Valley School District, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I would like to thank each of our board members for the time that you put into your positions. I also want to thank you for your professionalism in how you present and conduct yourselves in these board meetings. Tonight, I stand here as a concerned parent in the Paradise Valley School District, and I do appreciate the opportunity to speak. My concern as a parent in this district is the education and welfare of our students and teachers. So I'd like to talk about two topics tonight. First, tonight, I stand here to advise you that pornography should not be allowed in our schools, and I'm hopeful that this will be the school board that stands with our community to take a stand against approving any additional pornographic material for our schools. Our community is concerned about the increasing sexualization of our students, particularly as it's being pushed to lower and lower grades. Have any of our board members researched the effects of pornography on children? Because pornography is used to train and desensitize people and increase demand for human trafficking. Do you know that Arizona is home to the largest human sex trafficking recovery program? And do you know that we are taking elementary-age children into this program? I wanted to highlight this for the board and ask each of you to consider if increasing the sexualization of material is helping to protect students. Has anyone checked on our libraries recently? Do you know how many books we currently have in our libraries with pornographic material? When I checked today, we still have 60 books. I will tell you it's lower than it was last month, so hopefully we can get into the 50s next month. What if this board was known for putting an end to pornographic material being approved in our schools? What if each of you drew a line in the sand and said, "No more" on your watch? I would encourage you to give this serious thought as you continue to review material to approve this year and the future years you serve. Secondly, I would like to ask the board to start thinking outside the box when it comes to our district. Let's start with a conversation on health benefits for teachers. I heard at the meeting last month how the same health benefits are costing more, and I just want to ask, has anyone even had the thought to look into other options? I'm just curious, because there's definitely a lot of innovation happening in the health space, and we could provide better alternatives for our teachers that could potentially provide more for them, and maybe even at a lower cost, to help them get and stay healthy. And so in summary, I just want to say, let's stop putting more pornographic material in our schools, and let's start thinking outside the box, so we can make Paradise Valley the district of choice in the state of Arizona. Thank you.
Next is Emily Elbert, followed by Patty Gonzalez.
My name is Emily Elbert, and I am here to stand with the Pinnacle baseball team. I am a parent of athletes at Pinnacle, and I have had my own disappointing experiences with Principal Chad Smith. with Principal Chad Smith. I found my interactions with him lacked integrity and fell short of the standards I am familiar with at the Paradise Valley Unified School District. But it's not about me, and this is actually not my fight. What these senior boys and their families have endured is unimaginable. They have risked so much in these last few weeks at Pinnacle and in their baseball careers. I do not think that the message we want to send to our youth is one where neither integrity or accountability is upheld. What those boys did took courage, and it was the right thing to do. I believe it is imperative that we hold our leaders to the same level of expectations that we hold our children to. And unfortunately, Principal Chad Smith has repeatedly not met those standards. Thank you.
Next is Patty Gonzalez, followed by Karen Conway.
Patty Gonzalez, and I too am here to speak about the Pinnacle baseball team. I am on the other side of this spectrum and this ball. My son is a freshman that is playing on the team. And the bullying from the seniors, because he is a freshman playing on the team, has been unspeakable. My son comes home every night, Mom, do you know what it's like to go out there and play every day with a team that absolutely hates me? They talk about me. They say that I don't deserve to be here. It's not his choice. He didn't choose to be on the varsity team. He was chosen to be on the varsity team. I just think this has nothing to do with Dr. Smith. He's not, he's the principal. He's not the coach. None of this has to do with Dr. Smith. They're saying that he didn't handle things appropriately. He handled things the way that they needed to be handled. These seniors were one time the freshmen that took over the seniors before them positions. So the fact that they are bullying the freshmen that are coming in now is not tolerable. I don't feel that they should have been gifted anything. And their actions physically, mentally, have been abusive to the younger teams. And it's not just my son. It's any of the players that are younger than them that took their positions. And I just feel that there has to be some kind of standard put in place for these students that feel that they deserve a spot on the team based on their, their grade level and not their, their performance or their merit. And that's where this stands. My son comes home every single day and goes outside and practices for another two hours. Do those boys? I don't know. I'm just a mom in the stands. But I know what my son does. So to say that they're better than he is just because he's older, I don't think that's acceptable. And I think Dr. Smith handled things appropriately. I'm not so sure that the school board addressed the situation that transformed at the school because seniors were threatening the younger students and seniors walked out because they weren't getting their playtime. And I just don't think that that's, that's how things should be run. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Karen Conway, followed by Natalie Marquez.
Good evening, board members. My name is Karen Conway, and I'm reading this statement on behalf of Dr. Jill Bessemer, who could not be present tonight as she is at the Pinnacle High School Academic Awards Dinner for her son, Joseph. This is from Dr. Bessemer. I am writing to express my deep concern regarding Dr. Chad Smith, who is currently under investigation. I am formally requesting that he be immediately relieved of his duties, either through paid administrative leave or suspension until the investigation is complete. It is unacceptable that Dr. Smith remains on campus following an incident which he aggressively confronted my son, Joseph, threatened suspension, and had to be physically held back. This behavior was witnessed by multiple students and parents and has been documented in at least 20 incident reports. While it has been announced that Dr. Smith will resign at the end of the school year, that is not adequate or a fair resolution. Allowing him to remain in his position until then after such a serious incident sends a message that this behavior is tolerated. These students are expected to continue seeing him every day, even at graduation, as if nothing happened. This is not accountability. Dr. Smith told me directly that he would absolutely suspend my son, Joseph, not for any threat or rule violation, but simply because of a look that Chad Smith interpreted as defiance. He even stated he could go as far as preventing my son from walking at graduation. This abuse of power sparked a chain reaction. Ten seniors chose to leave the baseball team, and it had nothing to do with athletics. But because their concerns expressed respectfully and through the proper channels were completely ignored by Chad Smith, the rest of the administration, and the coaching staff. These students deserved better. They deserved to finish their final year and their last couple of weeks without fear and intimidation, and they should not have to walk the graduation stage with someone who used his position to threaten and silence them. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Dr. Jill Bessemer. Thank you.
Next is Natalie Marquez, followed by Keely Call.
Evening, Board. My name is Natalie Marquez, and I'm the mom of a senior on the Pinnacle High School baseball team. I wasn't sure if I'd get to speak tonight, but I just couldn't sit quietly. My son walked away from a program he loved, and I'm here to make sure what happened to him and his teammates isn't ignored. I was going to state tonight that I had not had any communication from anyone besides Corey Newland. Until today, I did have a lengthy conversation with Dr. Corson about the course of events that have occurred over the last two weeks. While I appreciated the communication, it was two weeks too late, and I can't help but feel it was damage control. I have sent emails, submitted formal complaints, and I have followed the chain of command. In 2017, Principal Smith left his previous district under similar scrutiny. Parents were speaking out, and his departure came amid controversy. And now we're here again with the same exit, the same pattern, and the same lack of accountability. Quietly removing him does not help the students. The students now are the future. It passes the damage to the next district. What happened here wasn't about one coach or one game. Not here to slander. It's about what happens when adults are supposed to be protecting kids they are entrusted to care for. The intimidation the students faced after walking away, the culture that allowed bullying to go unchecked, that's a failed system. My son was on that team. He watched it fall apart. He walked away from something he loved, and we're supposed to be grateful that the principal gets to leave quietly? Who knows how long it would have gone? What else would have happened? Who else would have been hurt? What happened was not normal. It's not a misunderstanding. It was wrong. I know there are people here who don't, don't want anyone to lose their job, and I get that you had a different experience. This is about what happened to these boys. The ones who were hurt, pushed aside, and they didn't make it up. I'm not standing here, trust me, because I want to, but I want to make sure it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Next is Keely Call, followed by Nisha Shaw.
Evening, Board members. My name is Keely Call, and I am the proud mother of Ryland Call, a senior at Pinnacle High School. This is Ryland's first and only year at Pinnacle. And while transferring schools as a senior can be incredibly hard, one person made all the difference, and that is Dr. Chad Smith. When we had to make the switch, Dr. Smith stepped in personally. He met with us, introduced our family to teachers, assistant principals, and coaches, and made sure we felt supported from the very beginning. He invited Ryland to stop by the front office anytime, even offered to eat lunch with him until he found his footing. He had his own son reach out to Ryland and made sure that the students included him. That's not just administrative support. That's character, and that's heart. Dr. Smith made every student feel seen, valued, and important. So let me be direct. The fact that we are here tonight discussing his resignation frankly makes me upset. We all read his public letter, and yes, it was gracious, professional, and pure Dr. Smith. But we can't ignore the whispers, the grumblings from a few disgruntled individuals who seem to have forgotten what real leadership looks like. If that noise had any influence over this decision, then we need to take a serious look at the kind of culture that we're allowing to take root. Dr. Smith led Pinnacle with integrity, compassion, and a student-first mindset. He created a culture of excellence and inclusion. My son, who was new, vulnerable, and just trying to find his place, was immediately embraced because of Chad's leadership. And while I support any man choosing to prioritize his family, I can't help but feel this resignation is a loss, not just to the students, but to the very foundation of what makes Pinnacle exceptional. Dr. Smith built a culture rooted in compassion, excellence, and inclusion. And now that he stepped down, we're not just facing a leadership change. We're tasked with preserving the standard he set and the culture he kept, he helped create. Because leaders like Dr. Smith aren't replaced. They're remembered, and they're missed. Thank you.
Thank you. The last card we have is from Nisha Shaw.
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak today. I am here also on behalf of supporting Dr. Chad Smith. I am a parent who has been at Pinnacle High School for the entire time that he has been there. I had, they graduated a couple of years ago, and they're current junior. I have had the honor of working with Dr. Smith for the last six years, and more specifically for three, as I have been the treasurer of the POP, the big booster there. He is always at everything, and I wanted to make sure that we knew that he represents an entire school of quite a few students, not just a small faction. Wanted to remind that he is always at POP meetings, even if there's only three people there, to answer any questions, to listen to whatever we had to say. My child has always said that he has felt very included and heard. He is not an athletic child, but knows that he has gone to DECA, and he is always at those. He's at fine art performances. I wanted to make sure that everyone realized that it's a smaller portion of folks who are very upset, but there's a large, large school. He has the right to see the rest of the year through. His resignation is his own choice, but we should not tarnish his reputation.
Thank you all. So next on the agenda are items for discussion. So first is consideration of recommended 712 Fine Arts Supplemental Resource List. In additions to the K-12 Supplemental Resource List, this is a first read. And Dr. Ms. Copeland.
Good evening, President Greenberg, Governing Board, Dr. Reynolds, Cabinet, and guests. Tonight's presentation is the first read for the 712 Fine Arts Supplemental Curriculum Resource Recommendations. Maureen Minnick, Director of Fine Arts and Committee Facilitator and future principal of North Ranch, will present the committee process and recommendations and will address any questions you may have. Following that presentation, Amber String, Secondary Math Curriculum Specialist, will present the first read for additional K-12 supplemental curricular resources and address any questions.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Maureen Minnick, and the Fine Arts Director here in PV Schools. And the purpose of this presentation is to share with the governing board a first reading of the process and recommendations of the Fine Arts Secondary Supplemental Resources Committee. As a reminder, this encompasses several courses. In music, we have band, orchestra, choir, music technology, piano, guitar, AP Music Theory, and Survey of Pop Music at PV Online. Dance courses, theater courses, such as drama and theater production, and visual art courses, including drawing and painting as well as ceramics. To remind you, last year, we completed this process for elementary fine arts special areas. And if approved, these resources presented tonight will now provide our fine arts teachers with K through 12 options. Tonight, we begin by acknowledging our committee members and the purpose of their work on this committee. Then I will present the timeline and process and highlight the work that was completed to make this recommendation. We also had an opportunity to gather community feedback, which we will explain. And finally, we will end the presentation with a recommendation and next steps pending board approval. Before we begin our presentation, I'd like to take a moment to introduce the dedicated individuals that served on the committee. In this group, we have representatives from various stakeholders, including parents, administrators, and fine arts teachers. Every member on the committee brought their own individual experiences and insights, providing us with a comprehensive vetting process of the resources being considered. Fine arts teachers each brought in an area of expertise related to their specific discipline. This process started in September of this school year and concluded in late April. We truly appreciate this group and their work. Thank you to all our members for their willingness to participate in this process. The purpose of this committee was to assist the curriculum and instruction department in creating a recommended list of secondary fine arts supplemental resources for governing board approval so that the district meets the requirements of Arizona revised statutes and governing board policies. Board Policy IJJ, Textbook/Supplementary Materials Selection and Adoption, states that the board will approve and adopt all new textbooks and supplementary books. This is supported by ARS 15-721 and ARS 15-722, which also states that supplemental materials in classrooms require board approval. Since almost none of our secondary fine arts courses have an adopted Tier One curriculum, the exception being secondary band, strings, and choir, who use music first for sight reading, our courses are taught mainly through the professional expertise of the teachers in their discipline, as well as supplemental resources to complement the mastery of standards at each grade level. It's important to note that students in fine arts courses are taught by teachers skilled in their craft in ways that are best learned through original creation and interactive performance or portfolio work, not necessarily through materials read, memorized, or lectured. That said, many of them do utilize quite a few supplemental resources to ensure that students are learning context, history, and artistry of their art form, with many ways to engage, practice, appreciate, and create. In an increasingly digital world, we want to ensure that the websites and resources students are engaging with are appropriate to the course and grade level, and that they do not replace the benefit of in-person and real-world application and exploration. We use a rubric to assess every resource, and anything digital is reviewed for security and privacy. Throughout this process, a variety of stakeholder viewpoints and perspectives were considered, understanding the value of diverse input in improving our recommendations. The committee adhered to a structured process to involve stakeholders, provide loop-out communication, and comply with open meeting regulations. In September of 2024, we submitted a call to committee to PVEA, UPC, and PVP. Our committee was formed and represented a variety of stakeholder groups. The committee met three times, followed open meeting guidelines, and posted agendas and notices physically and online at least 24 hours before the meeting. Meeting minutes are posted within three days of each meeting. Additionally, committee meetings were open to public attendance. Each meeting includes dedicated time for community members to express their thoughts to the committee. This inclusive approach aimed to involve the broader community in the decision-making process. The task of inventorying and evaluating more than 700 supplemental resources was very intensive. This project involved the collaboration of about 60 teachers who teach 12 unique disciplines across 13 schools. The process began with teachers inventorying supplemental materials being used in their courses. And after the inventory was complete, I sorted the submissions into four different categories: books/magazines, websites, digital lessons, or ed tech tools. From there, redundancies or items not used for curricular purposes were eliminated, and the list was narrowed to 350. Once the sorting, categorizing, and redundancy were completed, myself and the district arts integration specialist, Leslie Mashbitz, evaluated each resource according to a rubric. These were reviewed for appropriateness to the grade and the course, and to ensure a clear connection to the skills articulated in the Arizona State Standards. Supplemental resources that met all criteria advanced a committee review. Supplementals that did not fully meet the criteria were reviewed by the committee to give input. Teachers were notified which supplements on the inventory lists did not meet the criteria and were asked to provide further explanation or advocacy. The committee then reviewed that teacher input and made final recommendations. Once the final list was complete, it was posted on the district website for 60-day community review. A feedback form was also provided so that the committee could consider any stakeholder input as it completed its process. UPC membership was informed and included information to their stakeholders through their newsletter. Teachers were also asked to stand out a message to their parents regarding the survey for their input. You can see there is a link in the slide, which provides you the entire list, which is organized into four broad fine arts areas, and then includes information on the type of the resource. There were few comments provided, but they were positive. One I'd like to highlight expressed the importance of keeping One I'd like to highlight expressed the importance of keeping the arts an interactive and interpersonal space where reliance on technology takes a backseat to creation and hands-on experiences. I'm sure all of us in the artistic and creative space would wholeheartedly agree. In light of all that has been presented, the recommendation to the Governing Board is to approve the recommended list of supplemental resources. Appreciate your attention to this presentation, and the second reading for this adoption is scheduled for May 15, 2025. At this time, we are happy to address any questions you may have.
Does any member of the board have any questions regarding the supplemental fine art resources under review? Ms. Christensen?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the committee. I'm always so impressed with the amount of work that goes into these curriculum reviews, and fine arts is not disappointing here. I just wanted to say thank you at this point. It seems like everything was very thorough and transparent, and I just appreciate. I know this is a lot of work, and even putting all of this together, the findings from the committee, so I personally really appreciate all the work that you all are doing. So please thank the other committee members.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen.
Ms. Wani?
Yes, amazing, thank you. I've been scrolling through this never-ending list of resources with links that is really impressive. So all of the supplemental material, like links and resources, will they be, so teachers will then have access to all of them, like within their, so you know, I see, you know, you have them categorized, right? So by, you know, I guess like engineering, for example, right? Or like music composition? So they'll have access to all of the different resources?
Yes, essentially, this is to allow our teachers to utilize what's on this list. Many of them don't utilize, well, obviously, don't use all of them, but might pick or choose even among the resource what's appropriate to their subject area.
And are they, I'm just curious, I mean, are they like free? Are there subscription-based?
Most, I would say 80% of what we're looking at with the websites, we're talking about accessing free materials. There was actually going to be a comment on the curriculum website that states that logins and student accounts are not supported. This is for the free resources and the context, and a lot of it is practice, music theory practice, and song practice, and that's essentially the idea.
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you. It's great. Thank you for all your work.
Dr. Lim?
So I just want to say a quick thank you for reviewing all these materials. So I marched drum corps back in the day and know many, many music teachers who teach at every age group. And I know on top of doing their regular education curriculum, they're also skilled performers that had to do all of the things for performing. So they all fit within their own genres and sit in their own spaces, and I manage in every arts. You've got every professional in that. So I appreciate you going through the breadth of their material so that they can continue to work in the space that they feel most comfortable and not be forced to use one set of material because we're doing a limited thing. So I appreciate you going through what sounds like an extremely large amount of resources and vetting all of these so that we can use them within our district while allowing those professionals to utilize the space that's most appropriate for them. So thank you for putting so much effort into this.
Dr. Lim, do not ask a room of band teachers what method book is the best book.
No, I have learned that firsthand.
Mr. Pantera?
Yes, great work on this. Frankly, I thought the list was a little too short, based on some of those projects I saw, like I said, at the North Valley Arts Academy. These students were using multiple sources and various, online things, offline things, books, and it was just amazing. And in each project, and they're all different. So I'm surprised it's this short, actually, from what I saw there, but it's pretty cool.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pantera, if I can make a comment about that. When students are doing kind of independent work, they may be pulling from more sources than this, or their teachers may even be supporting that they're exploring outside of this. This is really specific to classroom use and materials that will be in front of the kids to enforce the standards, so hopefully that helps a little bit with that.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. I actually think it's a great list. I mean, looking through it and the depth, the variety, you know, the fact that we've got digital tools, that we've got, you know, books and magazines, and, you know, a lot of different ways for a lot of different learners. I think it supports a very broad swath, and I too want to thank you because that's a lot of work you guys put in, so much appreciated. Anybody else have anything else? Because this is first read, we are not approving. We're just looking and listening. I think we're good. Thank you, Ms. Minnick.
It's Greenberg.
We need the presentation up. Thank you.
Am I good? Good evening. Hi, my name is Amber Strang, and I am the Secondary Math Curriculum Specialist. The purpose of this presentation is to share with the Governing Board a first reading of the process of recommendations of the K-12 Supplemental Curriculum Resources Committee to add additional supplementary resources. Tonight, we will begin by acknowledging our committee members and the purpose of their work on this committee. Then I'll present the timeline and process and highlight the work that was completed to make the recommendation. I will end the presentation with the committee recommendation and then answer any questions. I want to take a moment to recognize the individuals that served on this committee. I want to publicly thank them for the extra time they dedicated to help with this important work. This process started in November of this school year and concluded in April. We truly appreciate this group and their work. Thank you to all our members for their willingness to participate in this process. The purpose of this committee was to assist the Curriculum and Instruction Department in creating a recommended list of supplemental resources for Governing Board approval so that the district meets the requirements of Arizona Revised Statutes and Governing Board policies. Last year, the Governing Board approved K-12 supplemental resources to support our classrooms. As part of next steps in that process, Curriculum created a supplemental resource request form for principals to request consideration of additional supplements. This year, we received requests for 27 resources. These supplemental resources support our district multi-tiered system of supports initiative. If you look at the visual, the green represents our Tier One core adopted curriculum. This curriculum already goes through the committee process and Governing Board approval. The Tier Two and Three, which are the yellow and pink pieces of the triangle, provide intervention instruction in addition to the Tier One. They provide more support for students who need additional interventions. Often, schools need supplemental resources to fill these needs. The purple triangle, which represents enrichment, is often supported with supplemental resources as well. Supplements used for these purposes need to be evidence-based, standards-aligned, and complement to our curriculum that's already adopted. We want to adhere to the same transparency with supplemental resources that we have with the core curriculum. In addition, many supplemental resources have an online component. It's important to recommend resources that meet our privacy and security standards developed by our IT department. This approval process is a piece of IT's overall approach to online safety. Throughout this process, a variety of stakeholder viewpoints and perspectives were considered. The committee adhered to a structured process to involve stakeholders, provide loop-out communication, and comply with open meeting regulations. In November of 2024, we submitted a call to committee to PVEA, UPC, and PvP. Our committee was formed and represented a variety of stakeholder groups. The committee followed open meeting guidelines with agendas and notices posted physically and online at least 24 hours before the meeting. Meeting minutes were posted online within three days of each meeting. Additionally, committee meetings were open to the public attendance. Each meeting included dedicated time for community members to express their thoughts to the committee. This inclusive approach aimed to involve the broader community in the decision-making process. The process began with school principals submitting additional supplemental material requests that were not included on last year's committee process. Following submission, the Curriculum Department and IT reviewed the requested resources using a rubric to confirm they enhanced student understanding, provide further information, or offer extra support. This applies to both electronic and non-electronic materials. Additionally, the resources must support the Arizona State Standards, have evidence supporting academic results when used with fidelity, complement the pedagogy of PVUSD adopted Tier One curriculum, and be compatible with IT Technology Guidelines for System Compatibility and Security. Supplemental resources that met all criteria were advanced to committee review. Supplementals that did not fully meet criteria were reviewed by the committee and gave input. Schools were notified if requested supplementals did not meet criteria, and they were asked to provide further explanation or advocacy. The committee reviewed school input and then made final recommendations. Once the final list was complete, it was posted on the district website for 60-day community review. A poster with a QR code was posted inside and outside the district office lobby. As stakeholders entered the site, they received information about supplemental materials and a link to provide feedback. A total of 27 resources were displayed on the district website. Each resource was hyperlinked to information about that resource, targeted grade and subject were listed, and a brief description. The committee had two pieces of community feedback to consider. Both comments were advocating for the Get More Math resource. The board has also been provided a link to the complete list of resources. The committee recommendation to the Governing Board is to approve the recommended list of supplemental resources. We appreciate your attention to this presentation. The second reading of this adoption is scheduled for May 15, 2025. At this time, we're happy to address any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Does any member of the board have any questions or comments? Dr. Lim?
I think it's just a comment. I appreciate the district doing this ongoing review process and continuing to allow our schools to bring forward the resources they're using. We know it's a constantly changing climate, and what's available publicly can sometimes shift and change, so I appreciate that we're constantly reviewing and allowing the schools to bring forward what they need, because I bet these are coming from different schools that have different needs. So I appreciate that this is an ongoing review process in our district.
Ms. Wani?
Okay, so I'm just dying to know. So have you done this before this process where, to solicit in that sort of way from principals, where they can like click and upload their, you know, suggested or requested additional supplemental? Is this a new thing, or have you guys been doing this?
Ms. Wani, this came out of the process last year. So last year was the first year that we inventoried all K-12 supplementals and approved. And in that process, we realized there were probably some resources that we're going to miss because that was a huge process. So we created a process where principals can, if teachers bring resources to the principals, that I can speak with them about those. They can submit them, and they have an opportunity to bring them to a committee.
I love that. I wish that there were like virtual suggestion boxes everywhere that I went, so I think that that's really great. And I'm just curious, did you see from like many different schools? Did a lot of them come from one or two schools? Like just kind of curious about how that shook out.
I don't have the list right in front of me, but we did get a variety, and some of them were program-specific. They needed some resources for the program, but they came from all over, all K-12.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Christensen?
I just want to say ditto and kudos. I'm not going to repeat what I said earlier, but it applies to this process as well, so thank you for all your hard work.
Anybody else? Ditto as well. Thank you very much. Yeah, we should, the next one. That is the end of our agenda. Before we adjourn, I'd like to remind you that the next regular board meeting will be held Thursday, May 15 at 6:30. Mrs. Christensen, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're voting. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you.